Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this May 6, 2020, meeting of the North Carolina State Board of Education. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. Now welcome Board members, advisors, staff, visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers for our meeting. For our visitors and those listening online, our committee meetings and reports will span two days. Tomorrow's meeting will include voting on any items needing action. Board members are reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this board. Any member of the board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record, and if during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the microphone to the attention of the Chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. Graduation is an important milestone for our public school students and their families. More than a ceremony, graduation is the culmination of 13 years of hard work. It marks the transition from childhood to being an adult. Unfortunately, due to the worldwide pandemic, many of our seniors may not get to experience the traditional pomp and circumstance this year. Undeterred, our districts and school leaders are formulating creative ways for students to celebrate completing high school, consistent with the statewide guidance issued on Friday in conjunction with the Governor's Office with the Class of 2020. An example of this creativity, of this determination to honor the Class of 2020, is our own Principal of the Year, Tabari Wallace, who has partnered with Ed NC to acknowledge the accomplishments of seniors at his high school. Tabari's efforts have gained national attention, and well-deserved, and they signal one of the many reasons for celebrating National Principals Day on Friday. Our principals provide the leadership, strength, compassion, and courage in our schools every day, reinforcing the crucial social and emotional supports to our staff and students while carefully implementing policies and guidance issued at the state and federal levels. Mr. Wallace, we want to express to you our thanks, to you and to every North Carolina principal for being the creative, steady visionaries, shining rays of hope across our state, benefiting all of our staff and students that you serve each day. Thank you for leading the way, and I'd be glad to give you an opportunity to make a few remarks.
Thank you so much, Chairman Davis. I had to take a moment over here, think somebody's peeling some onions. I'm trying to tell somebody to stop peeling these onions, I had to get myself together. But thank you so much for those kind words, Chair. What we did on Monday was the least we could do with what the students are going through today. As you know, our kids in eastern North Carolina went through so much more just two years ago with the storm, where they were out of their buildings for 40 days. And these are the kids right here that endured that, and now we get to the end and now hear the pandemic. So I just want to let every senior in the state know that we're with you. The teachers and the principals are carrying this burden with you, and we're going to do all we can to make sure you don't miss your pomp and circumstance, and to make sure we endure this pandemic together, because that's how we began, and that's how we're going to end. So keep your heads up, seniors, we're going to get you through this. And thank you so much for those kind words, Vice Chair. Again, I'm glad this video is not showing, because I know Vice Chair would really have something on me then, because he finally caught me peeling onions, if you get what I'm saying. But thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Principal Bristow Smith, would you like to make any comments this time?
Chair Davis, I'm sorry, I had to put Katie Couric and MSNBC on hold so that I could unmute myself for this call. Sorry, Tabari, I had to get you on that. Chair Davis, over here in Edgecombe County, we are gearing up for commencement program and for recognizing our seniors in a way that is out of the box. We are organizing virtual commencement ceremonies, and we're going to make it a very special event. Ed NC is going to come out and join us to document that. I know that high schools across the state, like ours, are looking for ways to both validate the experiences that students have had, to celebrate their accomplishments, and to make each family feel that we are going to get their children across the finish line in a way that lifts up the total investment that they have made also in this. I think it's important for us all to remember that we, graduation is not the end. We call it commencement because it's the beginning, and if we have done our job right in K-12, then what we've really done is we have set children up to be successful in what comes next. So I have every confidence that every principal in our state, all the teachers who are out there putting their heart and soul into this remote learning experience, that we're helping children to build grit and to build resilience and to build perseverance, and we're not just teaching it, but we're modeling it. So I'm so excited that we are in this time together. I think North Carolina has been a leader as we push through this pandemic. I appreciate the leadership of the Governor, of the GA, of the State Board, of the principals, and of the teachers, everyone in the state pulling together. The agency has done an amazing work to pull us through this, and I know that although it may feel like the end of a school year and the end of, you know, the high school experience for our seniors, it really is the commencement of something even better and grander, and we know that. So thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments, Chair Davis.
Our thanks to you and all of our principals across North Carolina for what you're doing every day for our students, but particularly in these challenging times. As graduations are planned across the state, we will follow the established social distancing guidelines to maintain the safety of our students, their families, and our educators. And at this time, we're pleased to receive two COVID-19 updates. One of these will be presented by Ms. Meredith Gaskell, our high school advisor, who will provide an update from a high school senior's perspective. And following Ms. Gaskell's presentation, I'll call on Doctors Emory and Stigall to write an update on DPI's continued progress in achieving the mission assigned to the State Board and DPI by the Governor to mitigate the effects of COVID-19 on our students. Ms. Gaskell?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you. Good morning, Board members, advisors, and everyone listening along. My name is Meredith Gaskell, and I've had the pleasure to serve as the Senior Advisor to the Board this year. I can't believe it is already nearing the end of my term, and I wish the circumstances could be different so we could all be in the same room today, but right now I'm just thankful that we have the opportunity to be together virtually. Being a high school senior during the COVID-19 pandemic has been a lot of things. Sad, because I didn't know I was going to my last day of high school when I did. Crazy, because I never thought my graduation from or senior awards could get canceled or postponed until further notice. And scary, because the whole current situation brings about a lot of anxiety and uncertainty regarding the future. But on the brighter side of things, this pandemic has also given me and many others a chance to see things differently. It has been full of celebrations, whether it's in the form of a virtual signing day like my school held last Friday, or a drive-by birthday party. I've been amazed by how far school administrators and teachers are willing to go to show students that we are still loved and cared for, even if we aren't in the school building. Finding out that we wouldn't go back to school this year was very hard for everyone. Speaking for the seniors in North Carolina, I feel like we realized we wouldn't have the proper closure to 12 years of education before taking our next steps into higher education, the workforce, or the military. We won't get to sign 12 yearbooks or reminisce about how we have changed throughout high school, but we will get to tell our kids that we lived through the coronavirus pandemic and that we came out stronger because of it. As the Senior Advisor to the Board, this situation has affected me because I've been able to listen in on the conversations that decide how distance learning will take place, and even participate at student forums to talk about the best grading policies for the end of the year. As educators across North Carolina come together and passionately advocate for our wellbeing and not just the end-of-the-year test grades. As an advisor to the Board of Education...
Ms. Gaskell, can you stop? Hang on just a second. Can everyone please mute their line so we can hear Ms. Gaskell's comment? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Being able to serve as an advisor to the Board of Education during this once-in-a-lifetime pandemic has given me the opportunity to see how decisions are made in times where decisions have to be made quickly and effectively. Like I talked about earlier, I've still felt so much love for my teachers, and I'm not even in their classrooms at the moment. This is because educators across North Carolina are committed to giving the Class of 2020 the end of the year they are supposed to have, even when the circumstances are not ideal. I'm in the Brown Salisbury School District at Carson High School, and I can speak for the seniors at my school that we have felt so honored and showered with support from our teachers and administrators for the past month and a half. Some examples of this are I've had multiple Zoom meetings with my teachers that just wanted to check on me and have a conversation. We had a virtual signing day last Friday where we could get all dressed up in our college gear for this year and post it on Twitter, and our school would retweet it. Also, our PTA raised money to buy all the seniors yard signs, and teachers have been personally delivering them to our front yards. And now seniors at my school are now working with administrators to decide what the best way we want to go about commencement is. I've heard of so many more school districts and amazing stories across North Carolina where seniors are just being honored and cared for even in this time, such as setting up parades for their seniors while teachers cheer the noise, or the stadium lights to honor the Class of 2020, and many other celebrations that can take place while being socially distanced and safe. I can speak for everyone, I feel like that this outpour of love has made all the difference during this difficult time. The next slide has a quote that I really love, and it's been a lot of comfort during this time. "A life lived in fear is a life half-lived." My friends and I have lived by this quote the past month, and I encourage everyone listening along to think about committing these words to our current circumstances. Even though it may feel like a very dark and worrisome time, I think we should embrace the togetherness that we are all feeling and not let fear rule in our lives. Especially if you are a senior and you are listening in, I encourage you to use this time to think about what you are thankful for and even your future goals and aspirations. Do not let the fear of this time hold you down and hold you back. I want to urge counties and local schools to use their support specifically towards the social, emotional parts of students, because focusing on the nurturing and nurturing through the whole child through this pandemic will really create all the difference and allow students to not live in fear and dwell on that. Aside from the coronavirus, I would love to share a few remarks with you about how serving as the Senior Advisor has affected me in my senior year. I've learned so many different things throughout my time as a Senior Advisor. Through the months of August and June, I separated what I had learned and gained into three different categories that you can see on this screen: operationally, relationships-wise, and personal development. Operationally, I learned about how the Board functions and saw the behind-the-scenes of public education in North Carolina. I learned about the different roles of members and saw the connectedness of the Board and the government in NC. I got to listen to conversations directly affecting public education and use my perspective to help the Board make decisions. Relationship-wise, I've gained relationships with educators across North Carolina and learned so much from their passion for students. I've had meaningful conversations with members and advisors and have been given some of the best advice I've ever received. I hope I've had an impact on you all like you have had on me. Personally, this opportunity has allowed me to develop into a better student, citizen, and overall person. When I attended my first meeting back in September, I was so nervous and worried that nothing I had to say would be a good enough contribution. But throughout my time, I've learned that the value of a voice is always important, and each of you have made me feel like my voice is important. If more students and people use their voice and their passions to make change, the world will be a better place. Your passion for students in North Carolina inspires me to dig deep and find the things that make me most passionate. Also, this experience gave me the opportunity to be outside of my comfort zone more often and actually become comfortable with being in there. Being able to meet and introduce myself to some of the highest esteemed educators and changemakers in North Carolina gave me the confidence to compete in scholarship competitions all across NC and put my best foot forward. Overall, I am so honored to have had this opportunity that completely changed my senior year and gave me so many valuable life lessons and compassionate mentors. Thank you all for caring about my perspective and allowing me into your conversations. So for the future advisors, I would love to share three main pieces of advice. Number one is to take it all in. Don't take this opportunity for granted, because it will be influential in your growth as a person and student if you allow it to. My next piece of advice is to build relationships with the Board members and advisors. Talk to them during lunch and message them if you ever have questions. They love to help you and give you advice. Finally, I would say never be afraid to use your voice and be educated on what you do with it. Research anything you are unsure about and understand what your position is in the topics the Board is discussing. You are a stakeholder in the conversations they are having, so make sure that you can provide your well-fought-out perspective. In the future, I think it would be wonderful if the advisors had a monthly web conference with students from across North Carolina to hear their opinions about certain issues and maybe present some of these to the Board. I thought that the conference Nate and I were involved in last month with the 9 through 11 Grading Task Force was so beneficial that it would be great if that happened more often in the future. We could cover a lot more of opinions and be able to speak from a more holistic perspective. I'm so jealous of the next advisors, because they will have more time with you, but I'm just so very thankful for this opportunity. So I remember at the first meeting I attended, I told the whole group that I basically had no idea what I wanted to do after high school, but I knew I wanted to go somewhere and learn something. Well, I finally have figured that out, thankfully. So I'm attending North Carolina State University in the fall as a Park Centennial Scholar. After endless applications and scholarship interviews and many prayers, I believe I've found the perfect place for me to continue my education and decide exactly how I want to impact this world. Thank you so much for allowing me to be the Senior Advisor to the Board of Education this past year and update you all on my perspective during this time. I wish I had more time to contribute with you, but I'm so thankful for the time I did have and what I did get to contribute. Thank you so much to Dr. Townsend Smith especially for helping me set up this presentation and giving me the best support throughout this past year. My new, well, my email that you can contact me on forever is on the screen, because the one that's on the State Board website is my school email, and I'm not sure if that one will be taken away after this year, but if you ever would like to contact me, you definitely can. I would love to talk, and I'll be pretty close by to the Board of Education. I'll be right in Raleigh, so I'll always be around. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gaskell. If you could, for just a moment, picture in your mind that we're all in the State Board meeting room, and we're all on our feet cheering and clapping and celebrating you and your accomplishments and your future. We wish you great success on your next steps. NC State University is very fortunate to have you as one of their students.
Thank you so much, Chairman Davis. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome. In fact, Meredith, we're the beneficiaries. We've learned far more from you on what you said and how you said it and how you've conducted yourself. In fact, today and every day that you've advised this Board, you've represented all our students, but especially the Class of 2020 with great distinction. We deeply regret how your senior year has been disrupted and any of those long-awaited events of senior spring semester that are postponed or canceled. And yet, in the midst of all this uncertainty, your class, the Class of 2020, has earned a unique badge of honor and distinction among the long line of North Carolina graduating classes. For when others might have stopped to complain, your Class of 2020 continued to march forward, head high and eyes fixed on the road ahead. And when anger or frustration threatened, the spirit of the Class of 2020 rose to the challenge, perseverance and determination and compassion. And when life threw you a curveball, Class of 2020 leaned in and ripped it out of the park. No doubt, in the years ahead, a disproportionate number of our state's leaders will emerge from the ranks of the Class of 2020. Your parents have raised you well, and your teachers have taught you well, and you have made us all proud. So congratulations, and we wish you Godspeed.
Thank you.
I'll now turn to Doctors Emory and Stigall for an update on DPI's work.
Good morning, Board Chair Davis, members of the Board, Superintendent Johnson, and our colleagues across the state. This morning, David and I would just like to give a brief update. We appreciate so much you having us follow the incredible Meredith, and congratulations, Meredith, on a job well done. It's been an honor to serve with you this year. David is going to share a little bit about the Grading Toolkit and the AIG Remote Resources. I will share a little bit about graduation evaluation and the new Wi-Fi hotspots that were just released, press release by the Governor's Office, and then David will close us out. Dr. Stigall?
Thank you, Bev. And Mr. Chairman, Board members, and Mr. Johnson, Superintendent Johnson, if we aren't extremely proud of students that before, which I know you all are, Meredith speak. Here to speak, and having a daughter who's a high schooler, a son in college, I too, Mr. Chairman, confidently say that students are this chaos with such dignity. I've been so inspired by the way they've shown maturity, made the best of such a difficult situation, and their voices have confirmed how vital it is that our work at the state level must include their voices, their perspectives. They deserve that seat at the table. It's not even they deserve, they have to be there. They're the ones who we're working for, and Meredith and Nate and all the seniors out there, as well as all the other high school and college students out there, we honor you. You will be the ones who move our country forward in the years to come, and I could not be more confident in that prospect. So I'm reinvigorated with excitement about what's ahead for our country and for our state, and I wish the senior class the very, very best. As a quick update to the Board about some of the key work that has happened since our last meeting, as Dr. Emory shared, we've developed a few resources that we've been working with districts on. One of those is a Grading Toolkit that has been recently produced and sent to districts. These new toolkits were released last week, and they include a link to an academic policy webinar that was conducted. This webinar gave an overview of you as a State Board, the policy that you have on K-11 grading, graduating seniors, as well as promotion and retention. The toolkit included a Spanish one-page grading and promotion-retention FAQ. It included a one-page grading and promotion-retention FAQ in English, as well as K-11 grading guidelines, and a joint NC-DPI State Board of Ed news release. This also, this toolkit also included graduating senior grading guidelines with a one-page FAQ for those seniors, and we were proud of the work that was done along those, and we appreciate you as a Board leading that. We've also developed and sent out a new AIG Remote Learning Resources site. Ms. Shaw Coltrane has led that work, and the Division of Advanced Learning and Gifted Education has done that work. They launched the Remote Learning Resources to support AIG learners in North Carolina. A COVID-19 Remote Learning Resources page was created for teacher-friendly, ready-to-use resources. One of those resources is an Advanced Learning Labs, which was created to engage, activate, and grow K-12 students during this time. Each of these Advanced Learning Labs is a two-page document designed to be printed or electronically distributed by schools or teachers for remote learning and exploration for our AIG learners. The new Learning Labs will be released weekly for the next seven weeks. These labs are available for K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and then, of course, for our 10 through 12th graders. A second resource is a virtual enrichment and extension resource for AIG and advanced learners that's been compiled for each grade span, elementary, middle, and high. These resources are high-quality, online resources that have been curated and reviewed to engage the AIG learner and cover critical thinking in ELA, math, STEM, arts, social sciences, and creativity. We want to share our thanks to the General Assembly. We've been working closely with the General Assembly on COVID-19 bills and support. We were very grateful for the thoughtful and deliberate planning and discussions that the General Assembly put into responding to school and district needs, and we're very thankful to the inclusiveness of our suggestions and our requests. And as Bev is going to share, there's other work that's going along with licensure and other areas, so Bev, I'll pass it back to you, and then I'll close us out. Dr. Emory?
She is reconnecting, so just give us one second. My apologies. Working on...
Ms. Townsend Smith, would you like for me to try to cover her parts?
Yes, please.
All right, I apologize if I'm not completely sure all that she was sharing, but I do know that one of the areas that she was going to share was education evaluation recommendations. The COVID, we worked with districts on the COVID-19 pandemic related to school closures and how it's made it possible, impossible for most schools to complete their typical annual evaluation process. DPI has issued guidance that public schools should not attempt any online or virtual observations in order to complete the evaluation process.
across the state, as well as our guidance that was on Friday, sort of vetting those ideas. Everything we have up in the padlet meets the guidelines that have come out from the agency as well as DHHS. Also, just wanted to say, the governor just released this morning, and I know many of you have been involved or heard about the hotspot contributions. We're so grateful to Google, Duke Energy, as well as AT&amp;T for helping us extend accessibility through the bus hotspots. As of today, we have 27 districts and 156 hotspots that I believe will begin to be delivered today. We appreciate the coordination with DIT, the agency, and these great supporters to help us reach students across the state of North Carolina who have had challenges in accessing our remote learning plan, so very grateful for that support as well.
And I will share that Dr. Emory and I, along with all the wonderful staff at the department, are shifting our support, along with Superintendent Johnson and his leadership. We're focusing to proactive planning. We're working with districts and our external partners on contingency planning for the coming days, coming weeks, and coming months around reopening and all that goes along with that. We just want to say thank you to the state board, to Superintendent Johnson, the governor's office, DHHS, and all the many other partners that have been so collaborative, results focused and proactive, and we're excited to continue the work as we move our state forward into the next phase. That's our updates for today, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Doctors Emory and Stigall. We appreciate your leadership, particularly during this unprecedented time. Your work and the work of your teams has been 24/7 relentless and timely, and is really benefiting our students and educators and districts. At this time, I'd like to open the floor if any of my colleagues would like to make comments or ask questions, either of Doctors Emory or Stigall or Ms. Gaskin.
Chair Davis, this is Dr. Oxendine.
Yes, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you so much. Just as a reminder, at our last special call meeting, there was, and this is in reference to the evaluation of teachers' process as it relates to everything captured in a NESA's policy, and there was a discussion, an important discussion, and also an agreement that Dr. Tomlin and Mr. Snyder would put their heads together on an appeal process in the event, the summative evaluation of a teacher for 2019 might be, could be, or more strong indicator of progress than what would be determined for 2020. So I just wanted to bring forth that reminder that that work is probably underway as it relates to an appeal.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Any other comments? My colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. JB.
Mr. Buxton?
I just, it might be worth clarifying later. I think the bill passed by the General Assembly may render that our request moot, given the requirement that teacher evaluations be based on observations completed this school year prior to March 16th. So I think it would now incorporate, and I'm not sure our earlier discussion now has standing, but that would be for Mr. Snyder, maybe Mr. McKinney, and maybe we could deal at a separate time. Finally, I just, let me thank Deputy Stigall and Emory for all the work that they're doing, and it feels like what they just reported on is a tip of the iceberg related to all the work that's going on in the department. Just want to express my appreciation.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. Other comments, questions? Okay, very good. And we'll proceed with our agenda. Board members, you've seen the agenda for this May 6, 7, 2020 meeting now for some time, and had an opportunity to review it. I ask if there are any requests for changes to the agenda. And if not, I request a motion for approval of the March 6 through 7, 2020 agenda.
So moved. This is Ms. Camnetz.
Motion by Ms. Camnetz. Is there a second?
Second by Donna Tipton Rogers.
Second by President Tipton Rogers. Dr. Townsend Smith, will you call the roll to capture the vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Buxton?
Yes.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnetz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Motion carries. We have an agenda, thank you. We will now proceed to our committee reports. I note to the committee chairs and audience that all voting on consent and any item requiring action will be completed tomorrow via roll call vote. I'll now recognize the chair of the Education, Innovation, and Charter Schools Committee, Ms. White. Ms. White?
Good morning, Chair Davis. Thank you for the introduction. I'm Amy White. I, along with Jill Camnetz, share the responsibility of leading the Education, Innovation, and Charter School Committee. Our first item today on the agenda is an action on First Read. This is a request for a one-month delay for the NC Access Program subgrant timeline. If you'll remember, colleagues, this grant is an opportunity for charter schools to increase equitable access to economically disadvantaged students so that charter schools can better reflect the populations they serve and the individual LEAs. We've had tremendous success in and interest in schools approving for this grant. We're now working on the next year. And today, to walk us through any questions that you have from last year's, excuse me, last month's discussion on this, is Mr. Jay Wayland, and I believe Mr. Machado is also available. Board members, do you have questions about the suggested one-month delay? I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. Dr. Townsend Smith, do you see anyone?
No questions on this end, Ms. White.
Okay. Without further discussion, then, if there are no questions, we'll move on to EICS II. This is the 2020 Charter School Application Timeline and Process. This also is an action item today. This is an opportunity to, again, communicate to the Charter School Committee what their timeline dates and the processes will be, and here to answer any questions that you might add is Mr. Dave Machado. Board members, do you have questions for Mr. Machado regarding the proposed 2020 Charter School Application Timeline and Process for this year? Okay, I'm not hearing any. I do want to let you know that Mr. Machado and his team took the time to put together the little PowerPoint that's in front of you that just gives you a highlighted difference between 2019 and 2020. It shows an abbreviated timeline, and I did have conversations with Mr. Machado about the copious amount of communication they've had with the charter school community about these adjusted timelines. With no questions on that, we'll move to EICS III, also an action item. Last month, we had before us Alamance Community Charter's request to amend its charter enrollment projections. Just as a brief reminder, this is a school that would, will open this fall, and they wanted to, they came before us requesting space for an additional 60 students based on the 100 kindergarten students on the waitlist for the program. Do you have any questions for Mr. Machado about this particular request? Okay, thank you so much, with no questions on that one. The last item for action today is EICS IV, which is Team CFA, the Community Public Charter's request to terminate the EMO relationship. There, again, you saw this last month due to some changes at, I'm having a hard time getting, but there we go. Team CFA Community Public Charter is a newly opened charter school in Gaston County, and Team CFA and Board of Directors have mutually agreed to terminate the CMO agreement. Do you have any questions for Mr. Machado about this request to terminate? Okay, thank you for your attention to those items. They'll be before you. EICS I through EICS IV will be before us for action tomorrow. We'll move to EICS V, which is NC Virtual Academy's request to maintain its enrollment above the statutory maximum. As you can imagine, with the changes that we've experienced this spring, we, with the pilot program, they were holding at 2,592 students, and with the increased demand for online learning, they anticipate that number staying the same or even more, so they're requesting to keep that enrollment above the maximum. And here to walk us through that is Mr. Dave Machado.
Thank you, Ms. White, Chairman Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Johnson, and the board members. Last year, the State Board of Ed approved the enrollment increase for North Carolina Virtual Academy to allow it to expand to 20% to 2,945 students. Charter School Advisory Board recommended that this be a one-year decision, and in turn, the NCVA came back to CSAB asking to keep that number at 2,945 students, so that is why we're bringing it back to State Board of Ed so they can keep that number that they currently are approved to have. They currently have 3,100 applications for next year, and they have 403 seats available. Over 85% of their students have signed letters of intent to return, and they have no seats available in high school nor in third grade. And last year, they were allowed to grow by 20%, but their board decided that they only wanted to grow by 10% so they put more emphasis on the academic growth of the school, which I thought was a very smart decision by their board. They do have a new leader, and the school has a huge emphasis on data and student growth. So our office and the Charter School Advisory Board is very comfortable with allowing them to stay at that 2,945 number. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Board members, what questions do you have?
Ms. White, this is Alan Duncan. Can I ask a couple of questions, please?
Certainly. Vice Chair Duncan?
Mr. Machado, thank you for that report, and I'm very pleased to hear a couple of things in the report, one of which was that the rise was only 10% increase in students. My recollection is that it was not a unanimous vote last year on this expansion, and I think my recollection is informed because I know I didn't vote for it. And my concern has been and is that, again, going through my recollection, the school had had an F grade for a period of time, and it had been a, not just, it had not met growth, had not met growth by a somewhat wide margin, and my thought then has been, and had been, that it would be important to get the quality up first before we look at expansion of students, to have the quality in a place where it should be. And I appreciate the new leader, apparently got that same focus, that getting quality up is an important aspect of what needs to be done, but do we have, and so, so we know there's an important emphasis on that, but do we know anything about whether or not there's any increase or growth that is showing in terms of where the school is this year? And I'm going to assume the answer, that's no, because of the disruptive nature of this school year, but it may not be because the virtual charter school is in a more unique circumstance.
We provided the information, Mr. Duncan, on math testing, which is a benchmark that a lot of our charter schools use, and there is some signs of growth. Obviously, we don't have an EOG or an EOC to, at the end of this year, to calculate that, but the data that they provided us and made the presentation to the Charter School Advisory Board, some of that benchmarking was encouraging. Felt like they were trending in the right direction. I think it's in front of you right now. Always room for improvement, but they did show some growth.
Yeah, I'm very glad to hear that. We know how well that translates to the end-of-year test. I guess here's what I'm trying to, I think that's a very good sign. I think the philosophy is being is a very good sign. Is there any reason, or was it addressed at the CSAB board level, that it would be wise perhaps to wait to see actual change results that would be a strong sign that in fact the school's in a place where it could potentially actually handle more students and at the same time, continue to give the kind of results with respect to grow, academic growth for students that we would all want to see for these students?
That's a good question, and I feel like at the CSAB meeting when this was approved, it was just right at the beginning of the COVID-19 crisis. Everybody was getting ready to move to remote learning, and they felt like this strong leader that they have, the commitment to student data and student growth, that they were very comfortable with making this recommendation. I'm not sure that answered your question, but they saw the signs that it was trending in the correct, the right direction, and there was a much more emphasis on student growth than maybe had been in the past.
Okay, thank you for the information you provided. Appreciate, Mr. Machado.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. Any other board member want to ask a question of Mr. Machado at this time? Okay, thank you so much. That's a discussion item. It'll be back before us next month. Board members, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to Mr. Machado and his team regarding the information that's been provided today. That'll bring us to EICS VI, which is Moore County's Restart Application Submission. And as just a point of privilege, I would like to congratulate Ms. Mariah Morris on her new position with Moore County. We are so...
it was just right at the beginning of the COVID-19 crisis. Everybody was getting ready to move to remote learning and they felt like this strong leader that they have, the commitment to student data and student growth, that they were very comfortable with making this recommendation. I'm not sure that answered your question, but they saw the signs that it was trending in the correct, the right direction and there was a much more emphasis on student growth than maybe had been in the past.
Okay, thank you for the information you provided. Appreciate, Mr. Machado.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. Any other board member want to ask a question of Mr. Machado at this time? Okay, thank you so much. That's a discussion item. It'll be back before us next month. Board members, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to Mr. Machado and his team regarding the information that's been provided today. That'll bring us to EICS VI, which is Moore County's restart application submission. And as just a point of privilege, I would like to congratulate Ms. Mariah Morris on her new position with Moore County. We are so honored and thrilled and excited to see your appointment there and that we know the work, the strong work that you will do on behalf of all students. And here to talk us about Moore County's restart application is Dr. Cynthia Martin.
Thank you, Ms. White. Good morning, State Board members and advisors. On behalf of district and regional support, I am bringing to you today three fast-track applications from Moore County. One for Southern Middle, another Robbins Elementary, and the third is Aberdeen Elementary. Based on work done with Moore County and conversations with staff members, we recommend, highly recommend these three applications to be considered to become restart schools.
Okay, board members, any questions about the applications that you have before us? There's a great amount of information provided for you about their plan and I love the fact that these are schools that will be working together. And again, I can't emphasize enough my excitement about the leadership of Mariah while in her new position. Questions?
Ms. White, this is Olivia. I do have a quick question of Dr. Martin, please.
Yes, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you very much. Dr. Martin, is this a first time in the restart world for Moore County? Do they have other schools?
This is the first applications received from Moore County.
And I believe these schools, they're in different parts of the county, I would believe, geographically. For instance, do you know anything about the demographics of the schools?
I don't know anything about the location. I'm not sure where they're located within the, within the district.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll do a little digging myself, but thank you for answering, taking the question. Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. So, board members, any other questions for Dr. Martin on this particular request? Okay, seeing none. We do have two consent items. EICS VII is Endeavor Charter's request to increase SIP's enrollment. And EICS VIII is Longleaf School of the Arts request to amend its mission statement. Those are on the consent agenda. Board members, do you have any questions about either one of those items? Okay, thank you so much, colleagues, for your attention to the items on the EICS agenda today. That concludes my committee report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. White. I now recognize Mr. Keenan, Chair of the Healthy Responsible Students Committee. Mr. Keenan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, Deanna.
Good morning, sir. You're loud and clear.
Okay. I had to step. I have an emergency. Could we, would you proceed on with me at this point, please, called the presentation?
Yeah, would you like for us to come back to you later in the meeting, Mr. Keenan?
Please do that. Please do. Uh huh.
Okay, fine.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So I'll now recognize, I'll now recognize Dr. Oxendine, Chair of the Educator Standards and Practice Committee. Dr. Oxendine.
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Davis. And joining me in the leadership responsibility of ESMP is Ms. Amy White. We have one new business item that we will cover at this time. This is going to be presented by Mr. Carl Logan and I believe he will have someone who will partner with him in this presentation. This is a driver's education update and it stems from a study, this is an update, that stems from a study that was conducted by the Office of State Budget and Management. It is a very comprehensive report, a very necessary update. I'm just fascinated by some of the information that he's about to share. So I would call Mr. Logan to the mic and let him begin his presentation.
Good morning, Chairman Davis, Superintendent Johnson, Committee Chair Dr. Oxendine, Vice Chair Ms. White, and members of the board. Good morning. On behalf of my team, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to provide this high-level snapshot of the state's driver education program. This is the first time that we've had an opportunity to show the results of some tremendous work produced by our team. So hopefully, our presentation will provide a bright spot during some terrifically challenging times. Being that this may be the first update in many years, possibly decades, we will reference the history briefly and then on to original studies and recommendations of the program. Pardon me, but Deanna has given us permission to speed during this presentation. The driver education and training provides new drivers with the information and skills and attitudes designed to produce safer drivers who are less likely to be involved in crashing. So the, the national program is nearly 100 years old and transitioned from the first motorized vehicles to the highly technical vehicles of today. The North Carolina journey began in 1927 when the General Assembly required traffic safety education. In 1958, the State Board of Education required a curriculum. The United States Highway Transportation Safety Act of 1966 gave birth to four Es where education plays a major part. In 1992, the program was de-emphasized, which has led us to where we are today. Next, we will fast forward to bring you up to date on where the program stands, including some major accomplishments. And then we'll segue into the future of the program, where it aligns with the State Board goals and is integrated into the 2019 North Carolina Highway Transportation Strategic Plan, all while we do our part in educating the whole child. So on to Slide Three, the Administrative Matrix aligned our action plan. And across the top, you will find five documents providing us guidance in this project. In 2010, the OSBM completed a legislative required, very detailed deep dive into the program. In 2014, the Strategic Plan identified some major areas. In 2015, the Driver Ed Assessment sponsored by NHTSA was completed at the request of DPI for a peer review. In 2015, the Appropriations Act identified 15 questions, which sparked a four-year survey to be completed by the LEAs. And then in 2017, the national standards were introduced to us and are updated and republished. Down the left-hand side of this, of this slide, you'll see areas which were identified in the OSBM assessment and the national standards. And we're on Slide Number Three. And then, as we assess the recommendations from each one of these studies, they reveal similarities which allowed our teams to develop this matrix. Our team was able to combine all five into three key areas. Program administration, student curriculum, and being that the last of the university programs that each Carolina was eliminated in 2015, only two programs to train teachers remain nationally, which we were able to direct our focus to teacher certification. The Driver Ed Advisory Committee also uses these areas to create our subcommittee. Next slide. This slide shows a chart of the breakdown of the 2010 OSBM study, which produced 10 recommendations. And be mindful of the color codes that we use there to help to differentiate between the different areas that we, that we focus on. The study revealed that we needed a dedicated person to provide oversight. The program needed a dedicated funding source. We needed to address the reversions that the programs were having, being that there was a three-year period where the average was $1.8 million in reversions. We were to collect participation data. We were to address the first-time pass rate for permit test at the DMV, which was reported to be about 48%. And we were to create some performance measures and we were also to look into having a peer review by NHTSA. Then into the, under the yellow section, we have collaborate with DMV to address certification and recertification requirements. And then also, we were to develop a new standardized curriculum using one or more, or components of the national recognized curriculums. We were also to introduce new technology into the program and incorporate distance learning, instruction, and stimulation. We're also needed to look at the parental involvement, which should be a requirement in the program. I've kind of sped through this, this slide for just a moment here. I will come back here in just a few minutes to recap this. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to pause for a moment to allow Tanya Eastwood, our project manager, to give you an annual update of our teacher ed program step. Tanya.
Hello?
There you are.
Okay. So this is the slide that we had for traffic safety and we originally shared this as we prepared to roll out the program. As you can see highlighted here on this slide, there are a few red areas here. And those red areas highlight things that we were, we did not meet that deadline. And the reason why we did not read those, we did not reach those deadlines was because of the feedback we received from our pilot group. So during summer 2019, when we were prepared to pilot the licensure pathway, based on the curriculum development, as we worked with the digital teaching and learning team and NCBPS, as NCBPS shared their expertise and their resources and recommended processes, that timeline was extended just a little bit so that we will make sure we had a really great solid foundation. So we actually implemented it during fall 2019. So in addition to the summer, the teachers also identified that that was one of their busiest seasons and it would be kind of hard for some of them to dedicate that amount of time to the program. So we, we rolled out fall 2019 and the instructors, instructors did amazing. And if you notice, on spring 2020, we had originally said that we would have two summer sessions, where we would have a summer session. However, based on the feedback from the original pilot launch group, they felt that we needed to go back and redesign some of the course. We redesigned some of the course based on their feedback because it was so much content, we had to break it out so that now, instead of it being so many weeks, we're running this on a semester basis. So we will have a fall cohort, a spring cohort, and a summer cohort. And as we build instructors, we may have the ability to offer multiple cohorts during one semester. So that was the best recommendation during that time. So as I shift to the next slide. So whenever we launched our course, this is the original course foundation that we had. Of course, it has all the information, contact information, images, and it produced 14 mentors out of that group. And with that, we realized that we needed to do some additional items there to help the students locate information a little easier. Next slide. So based on that student feedback, what we were able to do is leverage a tool called City Labs. And what City Labs allows us to do is it allows us to go in and do coding inside Canvas without having to pay for a developer. And what this allows us to do, if you can notice, it's easier for the student to see where do they need to start, where's their syllabus, where are their resources, where are the modules. This better aligns with the Universal Design Language, which is UDL, and it also is preparing us for the next phase of submitting our course through Quality Matters. Next slide. So our original plan was fall 2020, we were going to get some additional information from our teachers. However, we're having to shift. COVID-19 is causing us to step outside the box. And so with that, our original plan was to have some face-to-face meetings so that we would get the feedback from the teachers and do training inside of the course on the road in each one of our SBE districts. However, we're not able to do that at the moment, so we're having to revisit. So what we wanted to do was give them the opportunity to see this live, review any of the meeting data, evaluate the teaching practicums, and then come back so we can implement that information for 2021. However, we're having to readjust and move these things online. And so those things are currently in progress. I will now pause and I will shift it back to Mr. Logan.
So next slide, where we are. We have experienced a steady decline in teen fatality since 2008 due to the graduated driver license as indicated in the 2015 assessment. The Association of National Stakeholders in Traffic Safety Education Technical Assistance Team has stated that North Carolina leads the way in implementing the national standard. I was able to serve on the work groups in Washington DC to produce the remote and online program standards. The Driver Ed Advisory Committee was used as a model in a recent NHTSA publication. The parental involvement program was developed by the UNC HSRC and was piloted at several districts. DMV and DPI have quarterly meetings to collaborate on the administration of the public school program. Our focus is on decreasing duplicate processes. One of these is a remote, the possibility of a remote testing of the permit test in our classrooms, which was successfully piloted last spring. Those testing to allow a more efficient assessment of new drivers, all of which would decrease lines and wait times at the license office. And as Tanya just mentioned here, we think that the STEP program is the first of its kind in the country. And again, a special thanks to Dr. Evans and Dr. Tomlinson on their guidance and support in the development of this program. The next slide, Deanna, Number 10. Again, as we revisit this particular slide, the OSBM study produced a deep dive into the program. It had 10 recommendations. There were 18 action items in those 10 recommendations. Twelve of those have been completed, six are in progress. In the red section on the program administration, not only do we have a dedicated person to provide oversight as recommended by the General Assembly, we have a team that's assisting. We have two retired contractors who are subject matter experts. We have a program coordinator, a learning coordinator, and a project manager, which is Tanya Eastwood, who was just giving this report earlier. The combined experience in local, state, national leadership, curriculum development, traffic safety education, remote and traditional learning and program development is just over 400 years. Moving forward, we would like to, we have a dedicated funding source. We've addressed reversions, which have diminished tremendously. And we're collecting participation data and other appropriate data, which will allow us to do desk audits of the local programs. And after revisiting DMV, it was revealed to us that the first time fail rate was actually 10% lower than the previously reported in, I believe it was in 2012, I think that's when the report was. But the second time test pass rate was about 90% of all students. Therefore, we've created performance measures and are planning to create a self-assessment tool. tool that would be modeled after the national self-assessment tool for the states. We completed the peer review, which has been referenced several times in this presentation. Also, we collaborated with DMV to address the certification and the recertification requirements. As Tanya just mentioned, we've created this STEP program. I will yield to her for just a moment, another quick moment, to bring you an update on the student curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. So as it relates to the student curriculum, our goal was to have this roll out fall 2020, as you can see. What we have done is we have leveraged a instance of Canvas for driver education program. What this will allow us to do is DPI will be able to manage the curriculum at the agency level, and we will be able to push that course down to each LEA district, and any revisions will be managed by the DPI agency. What that allows us to do is make sure that every student has the same access to the same curriculum. In addition to that, it also allows us to move our reporting data from a manual data entry to being able to obtain those metrics directly out of Canvas. No one will have to send a report in as it relates to the student data. This will allow us also to take a look at that data and see where the student activities are, how we can improve based on counties and regions to allocate additional resources. Also with this, with us rolling out Canvas for the state, it will also provide a registration process. Many of our counties currently do not have a registration process for the students. So we also have a component that will allow registration individualized for each county. That in itself is tremendous because of the fact that we'll be able to see where the wait times are and also assist us with the certification process in addition to how we would also be able to make sure the course has the right amount of students, as we do have a fifty capacity max for students. So this will lay a great foundation, not only to get driver education into a blended learning model, as we have found has been the best practice for us to leverage, but it will also be able to get us to a place where we are able to collaborate with additional agencies, add the additional resources, and then bring our driver education and their instructors to a level that can reach our students whenever we have incidents where they cannot make it into the school system. Our plan is to roll out fall 2020. However, we have been steamrolling ahead and we may be a little ahead of schedule and can possibly complete the curriculum by end of May with the possibility of doing a little brief pilot and review with the LEAs in the June timeframe. I yield my time back to you, Mr. Logan.
So Dr. Oxendine and Ms. White, last week in your committee meeting, you made some statements regarding the standard courses study. We're proud to reveal that we did a report and our initial research reveals that the driver education national standards overlap and enhance various disciplines across the standard courses study, including the physical sciences, personal and consumer health guidance, essential standards, and career and technical education. And further character education and essential standards associated with civics and economics are also reinforced. The Canvas will increase the accuracy and efficiency between the LEAs, DPI, and DMV. DPI has an important part of the Highway Transportation Strategic Plan. We are evaluating the program effectiveness locally, state, locally and state level as it compares to other states, including the teacher ed program and parental involvement. As we conclude this presentation, I'd like to thank the driver education team for the hard work and dedication to provide and accomplish these monumental projects, which will shape the program for years to come. We urge the Board of Education and the State Superintendent Johnson to assist us in recruiting quality professionals at the local level as we need their participation to provide a safe educational environment and to reinforce the importance of lifetime safety programs for their students and their community. As you can see, this is not just a driver education course. It is well in the way of becoming a premier program in the country. We feel that the program should rank with all core disciplines, including school nutrition to improve and to produce healthy lifetime skills. Our section's mantra is failure is not an option. And what is not known is that our team is not only rebuilding a program, but we are rebuilding a driver education office, which is well-woven into the fabric at DPI and now a section in school nutrition and driver, excuse me, in district operations led by Dr. Lynn Harvey. With hers and Dr. Emory's support, we will not fail. Again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Logan and Ms. Easterwood. That was a fine presentation. I'm going to open up the floor or the virtual world, the virtual floor, to my colleagues, board members, if you have any questions or comments or observations, insights to offer at this time. Hearing on...
Dr. Oxendine?
Oh, I do hear someone.
Yes, this is Alan Duncan. It's really a quick question. I think several of us heard from some constituents concerned about the logjam that is being created for their children who are of age to be able to take the course and, of course, the circumstances are causing these kinds of issues. Perhaps words of hope that you could provide these parents for what the approach will be, perhaps getting the classwork done remotely and then whether or not there'll be the availability of perhaps enhanced number of instructors to be able to complete the driving portion of the course. There does seem to be some real concerns about the backup that's created through no one's fault, but obviously through the circumstances of our disruptive times, and maybe this is a good opportunity to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Logan, would you like to take that question?
Yes, we can appreciate the concerns of the parents and the communities on restarting the program. We are, again, a safety-oriented program, and we believe in adhering to the guidance and recommendations of the governor and the HSS and other safety agencies in guidance and directing us to, as we get prepared to get restarted. We do plan a systematic restart of the program. It will require us to collaborate with the Division of Motor Vehicles, who is currently operating on one-third of its driver license offices, and they are by appointment only. And as you can tell, that once there's a process in which the students need to complete in order to get to the driver license office, and it will involve our front offices at the local schools to receive the driver eligibility certificate, but we'll need to communicate with them. Then we will restart the behind-the-wheel, and as I'm told, the general consensus is that we have about four to eight weeks of driving without even getting to the classroom phase, which would help us to attack the backlog of students that were waiting to drive before and since this pandemic has closed everything down. So there will be a systematic restart of this, but we're just awaiting on direction from the leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Logan, and perhaps the urgency, the importance of this backlog issue that Mr. Duncan has just raised. I don't want to add any additional work to your workload, but maybe an update would be in order when you feel you have enough information, good information, to update the board on how this backlog is being addressed and hopefully moving, becoming not a backlog.
Yes, we could prepare to do that.
That sounds really good. Other questions or comments? One of the things that I have learned from Mr. Logan and Ms. Easterwood's presentation this morning, is that, this is Olivia's insight, is that we just don't hear enough from drivers education as state board members in our official monthly meetings. So, Mr. Logan, I want to, you have earned a certificate, I'm going to play on words, a license to come back to the state board on a regular basis and to continue updating us. I think you said the OSBM made ten recommendations, eighteen action steps. Twelve of those action steps have been completed and six of those action steps are in progress. So sometime in the very near future, I would love to have you come back. Hopefully, we will be in person on the seventh floor at that time in our usual spots, and you can update us on the status of the remaining six action steps. Absolutely. Thank you so much for doing good homework. You checked with the professionals in our curriculum area, those who manage the North Carolina Standard Course of Study, and you have learned that there is very close alignment between the driver, the national standards, driver education national standards, and our North Carolina Standard Course of Study across multiple content area and disciplines. So I'm very, very happy to learn about that integration and alignment. So if there are no other comments, insights, commentary from my board members, this item is coming to us, Chair Davis, not as anything to vote on, but acknowledging the work of drivers' education with regard to the, these action steps, and to give them a thumbs up to, I'm going to play on a word, full steam ahead, Mr. Logan.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the team, I know that your guidance and leadership that you're providing has just been paramount for our success, but thank you and Superintendent Johnson for providing that.
Thank you very much. And then we will go to the second item under ES and PE. This is going to be presented by Dr. Tomberlin. It is a very, not an in-depth item. It is pertaining to some modifications into the school benefits and employment policy manual. So, Dr. Tomberlin.
Good morning. Thank you. So, board members, today we have some changes to the North Carolina Public Schools Benefits and Policy Manual. Most of these changes are to reflect statutory changes that have occurred over the past year or so, and just clarifying some language in this, where there's a substantive change, it's marked in red so that you are aware that this represents some kind of difference in how we've operated before. Dr. Oxendine, would you like me to go through these or...
If you would just quickly maybe do a little detail around the items in red, and that's...
Certainly. The first item I would direct you to is 3.4.7, donation of bonus vacation leave. So it is common every year that we, that teachers and other state employees are awarded bonus leave. Some of that leave has special restrictions around it, and those restrictions are captured by OSHR. So for the purposes of teachers understanding how to use that, and districts how to use that leave appropriately, we've linked to the OSHR policy list that clarifies that because not all bonus leave is the same, given the year in which it was awarded. So that's, so we're leveraging the state's guidance on that for our, for the field. In 4.1.2, purposes for which sick leave may be used, this change is to recognize there was some inequity in the way we allowed sick leave to be used for non-birthing parents. If a, if, under the old provision, the non-birthing parent could only take sick days after the birth or replacement of a child if the child was acquired through adoption or foster care. And so we've changed that policy to recognize that non-birthing parents of naturally born children should also receive those, that ability to take the thirty days of sick leave for the purposes of bonding with their child. I will pause there in case there's any pushback. That's a pretty substantive, big substantive change.
Are there any questions, board members? I see no hands. I hear no voices. So you may proceed, or does that...
No, that's good. 4.4, 3.4 just defines a year for the purposes of receiving donated leave. We've leveraged the FMLA policy here. The old benefit, the old language only just said a year, and there was some question in the field about how you define that. So we allow local boards to define it one of three ways, which comports with the federal, the FMLA policy. I'm going to skip 8.1.3 because it just talks about career status and changing that from tenured to career status. 14.1, teacher contracts. This adopts the, the language from, actually, this is a couple of years ago, that defines the term of contracts for teachers with certain number of years of experience, and those terms are one, two, or four, depending on the years of service of the teacher. 14.1.2 refers back to statute on the reasons for dismissal or demotion during the term of a contract. In that language, the statutory reference was just included there. For recommendations on non-renewal, we updated that to reflect the new deadline of June 1st for superintendents to notify teachers of their intent not to renew the contract. 16.1.3 covers the earnings cap for teachers who return to work after retirement. This should not be confused with the provisions of the rehiring high-needs teachers. This is the standard method of teachers managing their salary cap. This, the cap, their earnings changes annually. So rather than reporting incorrect numbers in the manual, which have to be updated every year, we've linked to the retirement system so that teachers can see the new annual set salary cap every year. And then 16.2 incorporates the language from Senate Bill 399, which allows rehired retirees to return to high-needs schools. That, the policy related to that is more under the direction of the retirement system than the State Board of Education, but we include a link there to refer back to the retirement system for any questions regarding the provisions and how this might affect one's retirement. The role of DPI and the state board in this is to simply verify to the retirement system as they get these requests that the teacher is serving in a school that qualifies as a high-needs school. So those are the major changes that we have made to the employment benefits manual. I urge you to read over the other ones that are of less substance, and please let us know if you have any questions about them. I will be happy to answer them. This is, as Dr. Oxendine says, not in-depth, but very important to the field for clarity on HR issues.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Tomberlin. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? I see no hand. I hear no voices. I just have one quick question to ask Dr. Tomberlin, and that is, I suppose this is going to be disseminated and communicated to the field via remote. Is that the plan?
Yes, we keep a digital copy on the website. So once this is approved, and I think you have a copy of the benefits manual with these changes inserted as part of your documentation, that will go up on the website, and we will alert the field that a revised copy is on the website.
Thank you very much. Excellent. This is a discussion item that will return next month for vote. This is a discussion item that will return next month for vote. It could, it could be a consent item next month. We'll just have to wait and see what we get or hear from the field. The, the last item is a consent item, and it is pertaining to career technical education, licensure policies and procedures, manual updates. That item was presented on April 2nd by Trey Michael and Lee O'Neill. It pertains to CTED 004, significant policy updates around career technical education professionals. You know, in a nutshell, what the policy revisions do is expand opportunities for CTE teacher preparation, improves the preparatory pedagogy, making everything consistent at 18 semester hours, except in the area of agricultural education, and I believe that is a 21-hour semester hour requirement. Adds licensing areas for CTE, which is going to build local LEA district and local support for CTE. Establishes the North Carolina CTE Institute that replaces, in lieu of course requirements at EPPs. Multiple ways to prove academic proficiency for CTE teaching candidates. So that is the one consent item for the month. And Chair Davis, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. I now recognize Mr. Keenan, Chair of the Healthy Responsible Students Committee. Mr. Keenan.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Richard Keenan, Chair, along with a good friend, Allison Duncan, as the co-chair on the Healthy Responsible Students Committee. This morning, we have an update, the new business on the anonymous reporting system, and I think we have with us Robert Trumbo and Michael Anderson will be the presenters this morning to discuss the update. At this time, I thank Mr. Robert Trumbo. Will he be the first one?
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Davis, Vice Chairman Duncan, Superintendent Johnson, and members of the board. I thank you for the opportunity to, to give you this update. It's a timely opportunity to do that, to give you an idea of where we stand. There's a couple housekeeping items I would use as a reminder that is, it is a work in progress. Approximately 68% of the state is covered live and going live with, with the anonymous reporting system. Some of the numbers that you'll see from our high-level data collection are based in time, and those numbers are changing daily as, as the app is, is operational. One thing I would like to do on the front before I get into this is, is from the Center for Safer School standpoint, acknowledge the service of Montgomery County Sheriff's Deputy Bud Fwang, who was a middle school SRO, holding off what his service was to Montgomery County and to its family. I didn't want this opportunity to pass without acknowledging that. And as we get into technology, reinforcing the, the idea that there are human professionals that are out there that are implementing school safety and are the backbone in actually implementing technologies, when technology has a glitch, the human factor is what's going to save the day. Part of the, the presentation is going to go into what our planning phase, what that entailed. I think the last update or the last presentation to the board was in and around June of last year. So we'll get in, give you an idea of some of the messaging challenges that took place early on and how they were remedied, both at the LEA level as well as the 911 centers that are out there conjoined with this anonymous reporting system and, and are vital cog with that. We'll get into the increment, implementation of what our methodology and strategy was for rolling and launching the platform out to the state. And then I'll turn it over to, to Mike Anderson, who's the project director, that'll give an idea of what, what's, what data is available and how that is tying in strongly with the whole child committee, the social-emotional learning side of things. Because you'll hear us talk further beyond this forum of the need to reinforce and show a brighter light on the threat assessment models that are proactive approach to school safety that will actually work the schools from the inside out. Based on previous experiences, there's a, they're a multi-layered approach to, to school safety from the locks, alarms, cameras, perimeters, barricades, and so forth. And this opportunity to, to magnify the attention for threat assessments and building these multidisciplinary teams that are in these schools and addressing some of the shortages that come along with the specialized instruction support personnel when it comes to psychologists, school psychologists, social workers, school counselors, and nurses, and how that augmentation of leveling the ratios to some degree will help reinforce the deployment of these threat assessment models that will be an add-on to, to this anonymous reporting system. Because the, the reporting system is not the silver bullet, but it is a strong foundation to build off what can be added on to, to this vehicle, to, to have a comprehensive approach to, to school safety and a proactive approach at that. So as we start, started the planning process, I came on board in July of last year. The, the contract had been recently assigned, so the foundational coordination was being set up. And, and part of the, to give an idea of what the app looks like, there's a public-facing apparatus that, that the tipsters would submit a tip in on, but the work that, that would come later after the work behind the scenes, the inward-facing platform is built, and that inward-facing platform is housed on a secure server to where we solicited, in conjunction with Sandy Hook Promise, who did the lion's share of the outreach initially, was to build these school districts and teams up of three to five members, get their contact lists, get their trainings in place so that it would culminate with a test tip and how they would communicate with one another. And it was suggested, along the same lines as the methodology for a threat assessment model, is to have multidisciplinary teams to include SRO, administrator, so, a social-emotional professional, whether it's a psychologist, school counselor, school social worker, or nurse. But realizing the, the staffing levels across the state vary. A, a three-to-five-member team that has multidisciplinary focus, that can come into play and act as an intervention to a tip that comes in and begin the process of collaborating with one another on how that remedy works and further this proactive approach. So a lot of effort was going across the state in a methodical approach to build these three-to-five-member teams, both at the school level and the district level. And to give an idea of what the school levels would look like, the, the app currently, as legislated, serves schools grade six through 12. So it has part and parcelled some of the, some of the population of the state. However, it, it was a big effort to get these teams built, and the flexibility that these teams have and how they communicate, they can build their own communication tree on how they want their calls to be routed. Some districts would give the schools a break at some point in time and have, have it logistically to where they would take calls and it would be arranged at certain times, and the schools would, would fill in at other times and so forth. So the autonomy that they were given to arrange their responses was key in, in how the messaging and outreach was to take place. The, the training would culminate with the test tip so that they would have an opportunity to practice on the back-of-the-house platform, communicate with their team members, as well as communicate with the crisis center, and a test tip to communicate with the 911 centers that the tip, test tip include, included a life safety scenario. The other part of the outreach was managing a message to the 911 centers. There were some challenges early on with that, but when we extended collaborative handout to the various folks that oversee and organize the, the 911 centers, and a lot of help was given by former Secretary Boyette at the DIT in helping us to, to develop a liaison so that the messaging could be accurately portrayed to the 911 centers on their roles, how the vital actions that they take, and realizing that they're in a community that are sometimes second-guessed on a daily, a daily matters that come before them in the room there. It's, we wanted to make sure that they understood that this wasn't a piling-on effect, and the vital role that they played in, in how this lifesaving mechanism was going to be played out is needed to be conveyed to them as well. Once again, they were part of the test tips. They were provided the opportunity to work with, communicate with the teams on the back-of-the-house platform and, and have that opportunity to be exposed in that training form. When the training is finally done with the, the teams and the 911 centers, then it's conveyed to, to the students in different platforms, whether it's a live video, in-person training from a trainer from Sandy Hook, or a plug-and-play training that they are given an idea of what the app looks like, how to access the app, what the conditions of submitting a tip are, to include the warning that submitting a false tip has the same penalties as submitting a false 911 call or a fraudulent call into the school for, you know, any range of subjects. So that, that item was given to the students at this kickoff, and once the kickoff was, at the school was completed, then they were in essence live. Once again, we go to the collaborative effort of, of tying in the law enforcement, public safety, education realm. When it comes to the Sheriff's Association, Police Chiefs Association, DPS, DPS EM, emergency management, DOJ, HHS, we cast a broad net of subject matter experts that are going to have a strong input on how we're going to find this needle and a stack of needles that needs to have some attention. And, and it's not, as you'll see later on when the stats come up, the majority is non-adversarial. There's attention that is given to the social-emotional side of things that authenticates the injection of the school psychologists, the counselors, the social workers, and the nurses. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Back up one, please. When it came to the implementation side, there was quite a bit of discussion on how that was perceived. The initial plan was to have a statewide launch. A lot of that was based off other launches that Sandy Hook had done in a state platform, which was only one. Once we did the initial polling and started building the roles of the teams and seeing the magnitude of building that roster, there had to be change, changing plans to, to realize what the schools were doing and what they were handling on a daily basis, and having this brought in and trying to be meshed in with their, their day-to-day operations as well. So we took a step back, took a survey of what districts and schools we had already lined up and ready to, to go with the team building and the testing and so forth. So once we took a, a survey of that and found that we could actually change to a managed incremental rollout so that if there was, as we polled the schools and districts across the state, if they were proactive enough to have their teams and so forth and manage to have them stockpiled and ready to go, then we can incorporate them into, into a wave approach. And then once that wave approach was, was manifested by schools and districts, then they could do a self-evaluation as to where they stood and actually gave the schools and districts the flexibility to indicate, we're close, but we could really appreciate going to wave two or wave three. So we had timelines built into where wave two would be a certain date frame, wave three would be a date frame and so forth. So we could publish that to the schools and give them an idea of what was a good fit for them, but also realizing that, you know, you're running the risk of kicking the can down the road was not an option, but the flexibility was certainly there for everybody to, to be able to fit it into their calendars and schedules. The incremental rollout allowed the, the conjoining of the 911 centers as well so that had the, they could be in lockstep with the districts that were going live and how have the ability to where they, they would have that backstop for the life safety tips as well. We did take into consideration, and we tried very strategically to, on a conceptual side, look at a regional out, output, took, took a lot into consideration as to what scheme and maneuver would be beneficial and found that we had to develop a plan to where, say a district had the charter schools on board, but the traditional district wasn't on board, and the 911 center was on board, to where we could service those charter schools, but yet have a contact at the district schools in the event that there was a tip that was aligned to, to the charter school, but yet was actually coming from a public school student. We termed that a seepage effect so that there was a, a safety net put in place through the contacts and coordination with Sandy Hook, to where if one of those scenarios did, did come about, where that attention would go to the school, the traditional school that was not live, the points of contact were established so that the information regarding the tip could be conveyed to, to the leadership of that school directly. And realizing that North Carolina, from my observation, is, is very well-suited based on how these schools have developed their teams prior to the app, and as well as in, including and embedding their teams and developing teams for this app. From my standpoint, it's, it's been an extremely unifying effect across the state, and it, and it puts a lot of the, puts all the districts on equal footing to set the framework for these, I'll call them threat assessment teams, some folks may call them response teams, school response teams. The, the role was to have that proactive intervention at the onset of a student or staff's issues. It, it gives voice to those who didn't have a voice to report things without ramifications. There are validations, checks in place to validate the information that comes in, and it gives a vetting process, a triage stage that gives them indications that the, the tip is, is valid. If it's not valid, then it's, then it's put in another location. In, in furtherance, the current status with the COVID-19, we took another step further and actively sought the implementation of a whole-child committee or the Specialized Instruction Support Program within DPI and have them work with Sandy Hook Promise so that a consistent messaging could be conveyed through both parties, vetted through DPI so that there is consistency, so that the information that applies to North Carolina applies to North Carolina. Sandy Hook Promise has a footprint nationwide, but realizing that one size doesn't fit all when different states are going through different challenges associated with the virus. We felt like that the resources that are cultivated within the subject matter experts within DPI and conjoined with the messaging outlets and these information stream developed from what we were able to establish with the app would be able to convey a message to the districts and schools of resources available to help the schools when it comes to the social-emotional side of things as they're dealing with the pandemic. And it's an opportunity to, to put the messaging out there that it's a conjoined message from DPI and the vendor that the, where neither one of us are asking for anything from the district. I think they've had enough of that, and they're, they want an opportunity to, to have something that we can vet to work, but doesn't become white noise to the districts as well, because I think a lot of them are getting a lot of information, and how we can get that to where it's strategically sent to them that may be help. That's our goal. As I mentioned before, the launch remains in progress. We had to activate a pause. There was roughly- launch remains in progress. Uh, we had to activate a pause. There was roughly, um, approximately a hundred and forty thousand students that were supposed to go onboard the end of, middle to end of March that have been pushed off and paused. Um, and, and we understand that, and, and those contingencies have been put in place. Um, I will remind as we go further, when it comes to the data, that, that, as we get to the data, I need to hand off to, um, to, to Mike Anderson, that the data is not aligned with the, the, the discipline data that we're all familiar with, uh, so that we're, we have a clear understanding of that as well. Uh, and once again, the, the goal is use this app as the rock in the water to develop, uh, ripples that come out from that rock is formation of these threat assessment teams. Uh, the concept's not new. Uh, I'm certainly not trying to Lewis and Clark and, and create new avenues that, uh, claim to have never existed, because it's out there. And I understand it's out there. I think our job is to, uh, draw a broader spotlight on what that proactive approach can do from the school from the inside out and augment the other security features that these schools employ. Uh, and a lot of that comes to the staffing levels of, uh, facilitating that threat assessment concept, uh, and, and bringing, um, the, uh, school psychologists, the, the counselors, uh, social workers and nurses i- into the middle of the room and, and helping move that concept forward. I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Mike to, to go over some of the data.
All right. Good, uh, good morning, everyone. Um, so we saw the, um, uh, we went live in our first districts, uh, November fourth. It was a Sunday, which usually when we put districts live, we do it a Sunday at midnight, um, just to kind of give you a, uh, a general idea of how we do that. So, uh, you know, when everybody starts waking up on Monday morning, that, that system's live. So, since November fourth, and obviously this number is, is, is very fluid, um, since this report was ran, there's, there's been three thousand eight hundred and fifteen, uh, total tips. Now, you're able to send in tips three different ways on the, uh, on, on the website, um, which, uh, seven hundred and eighty-three have done, uh, via an actual phone call, where you can call the, uh, Crisis Center down in Miami, which seventy-two, um, we, we've gotten seventy-two calls and, uh, on their mobile devices, which obviously is, is the most popular, with two thousand nine hundred and sixty. Now, once these, uh, once these tips are received by, uh, the Crisis Center down in Miami, um, they are triaged into two different areas. One is life safety tips, and the other obviously is a non-life safety tip. Um, and so there's, uh, as of the report date, there was four hundred and ninety, uh, life safety tips and, uh, three thousand three hundred and twenty-five non-life safety tips. You go to the next slide, and I can explain those. So to be designated, uh, a life safety, um, which basically you're dealing with, uh, suicide ideation, um, you know, a threat to harm, uh, oneself or, or another person, uh, planned school attacks, all that type of stuff. Um, they triage it into five different, uh, criteria. Is it threat of substantial bodily harm or death? Uh, is it imminent? Is it in progress? Is it just happened? Uh, is it credible information? Is clear convincing and evidence, uh, that has been provided? Uh, and it's pretty unique. A lot of the, a lot of the kids and a lot of the users, um, actually put screenshots, which you're able to do, um, from social media, uh, where kids post things on social media that they're not supposed to, obviously. Um, and so there, there's that opportunity as well. And so that evidence is also, um, maintained within that, uh, maintained within those servers. Uh, the suspect has the means or the intent to carry out the threat, and is that threat actionable? So is there enough information available, uh, for an intervention to occur right then and there? Um, so obviously all of those don't have to be met. We get back to the, yeah, go back to the further, uh, to the, yeah. Uh, all those don't have to be met. Obviously, if a, a threat of substantial bodily harm or death, if that's, uh, if that's apparent and, and that's coming through loud and clear, then they'll go ahead and, especially if it's after hours, um, they'll call the nine one one centers, which Director Trumbo said are tied in with this application as well. Um, and the team communications. So, the, the unique part about this is that the nine one one centers, uh, the, uh, the Crisis Center down in Miami, the school principals, uh, the, the student counselors and everybody has an opportunity to communicate, uh, live and, and the team communications portal, uh, of this. And so, once information's coming out, it's officer safety related, um, you know, uh, the nine one one centers will push that out to the officers that are responding to the scene of, of a welfare check. Um, but all the other ones, eminent credible information, suspect has means, all those are basically just, uh, kind of booster elements to, um, to add to the, uh, add to the viability of those, um, of those tips. Go to the next one. So the current statistics, obviously, we had to press pause, um, in, in May, I mean, in March, excuse me. Uh, so the students trained to date are four hundred and fifty-seven, six hundred and sixty-one. Um, the current live districts, and this is where it's kind of the, the math doesn't even out, but we can, uh, explain that, uh, further on in the presentation. We currently have seventy-one live districts, and nineteen traditional districts have opted out. And when I say have opted out, what that means is when we start to roll this out in July, obviously, um, we had districts that were aware of the legislation, and they wanted to, obviously be in line with that legislation. So they had either, uh, bought yearly contracts to another service, or had, um, had come up with their own type of, uh, anonymous tip line and everything else to do, um, to, to make sure they're in line with that legislation. And, uh, the, the high majority of those, which we have a list of, um, uh, we can, uh, uh, the, the nineteen traditional district opt outs are not truly opting out of the program. A lot of them have said, you know, in twenty twenty-one, we'll get back with you as soon as our contract is up, um, with this one. Uh, the current live charters are a hundred and ten. We have two charter school opt outs, uh, which they kind of fall in line the same as, as, as some of those traditional schools where, um, they had either partnered up with a really nearby, uh, traditional school, um, or they had just gotten their own service and they're waiting for that contract to run out before they're, uh, before they want to, uh, jump on the, um, say something app. And then, uh, all live L E A nine one one centers are participating with that. So, uh, there's twenty-seven different, uh, tip types that, that users could use. So, we only really kind of, uh, some of them you never really see, um, really any action on, but some of the top five tip types, uh, which represents nearly fifty percent of overall tips is bullying, uh, cutting or self harm, depression, suicide and drug use. Uh, we've had, um, anywhere from parents, um, uh, coming online and using the application or calling the call center and, uh, and, and talking about drug use that they've heard about from their kids in and around, uh, the school, all the way up to bullying and cutting and self harm. They'd be very surprised, or you may not be surprised at what kids will put online about, um, uh, about what they're doing these days, uh, especially when they're holding different hours of, uh, operation. A lot of them are up, you know, later at night, because they don't have to get up early the next day, unfortunately. So, uh, we're seeing a lot of, uh, a lot of the cyber bullying and online bullying, uh, come up, but really about fifty percent of the, uh, overall tips you'll see in these, uh, these top five categories. But there's always a question as to how we involve, uh, the school systems after hours. Uh, there was conversation about that early on and, and honestly, that, um, it didn't really scare a lot of districts, but it kind of made them weary about jumping on the system. Um, and, and our response to that was what, what would you do anyway? Um, you know, you receive a call at one A M., two A M. about an event that's going to happen at the school the next day, or, uh, a child has a suicide ideation. Um, and so, you know, you wouldn't really ignore that phone call, uh, if it came through another, um, if it came from another, um, outlet anyway. So, this, this chart right here, life safety versus non-life safety and the tips by hour of the day, obviously, the non-life safety is in green. Um, and you can see basically from six A M. to about eleven P M., nine to eleven P M., uh, is when the, um, uh, highest use is. Uh, and then you see the life safety tips compared to that. Um, and you see they kind of start, um, they start going down, you know, twelve A M. to the five A M. Um, I think it's important to note that any non-life safety tips that come in after hours, which is after the, the average school day, which is, I think it's about five to six P M., I think a lot of schools do, um, is, uh, those non-life safety tips are held until the next day at six A M. Um, and so you're not, uh, you're not peeing in these school, uh, teams and these principals with, um, you know, Johnny stole my lunch money yesterday type of tips, you know. So those don't come through until six A M. the next, uh, the next day for them to be able to deal with. Um, and so, uh, you know, it's March thirteenth, uh, basically when the, when the school started to shut down, um, I ran a, uh, uh, I ran a report to show, uh, the life safety tip summary since March thirteenth of twenty twenty. Um, you can see the suicide and suicide ideation is, is the highest there, twenty-five. Um, cutting self harms eighteen and depression is twelve. For a total of about seventy-one different life safety tips. Now, please remember too, that the, um, those, that number is very fluid and, and has gone up since then, um, when this report was ran. Uh, but you can tell just, uh, you know, the suicide and suicide ideation requires a lot of help and a lot of teamwork, which we have, uh, we're very proud to have that conversation in the forefront now and, uh, have these community partners, being the nine one one law enforcement, uh, and school teams, uh, working together to, uh, to make sure these kids stay safe. Uh, and just to let you know, you know, the, the, the application is up and running. Just because we're not in school doesn't mean it doesn't work, or we, you know, we have it turned off. Um, you can see the bullying is, is still very high, forty-four, uh, cutting and self harm is forty-three. Um, you know, and so the all tips summary since March thirteenth, uh, if you go through the next couple of slides, um, you can be able to see kind of the use, uh, but you're able to see also all of the tip categories that they're able to tip, uh, they're, they're able to tip in. Obviously, we delayed the launch summary. There were, uh, there were schools, um, split up between the, uh, March sixteenth and March twenty-third school days. Um, on, they, remember those were on Sundays at midnight when they was going to launch. Uh, we had a traditional school districts of twenty-three, uh, they're going to launch in, in between those two days, and the charter schools were at twenty-nine, uh, they were going to launch in between those two days. And so we've had to put them on pause, um, obviously, and, uh, we are in contact, we're in direct contact with them, um, you know, in, in getting those, uh, built out for, uh, late July, August, for them to, to get implemented. And with that, we'll have, uh, we'll have any questions you have.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Ford. I have a question. May I?
Please do.
Uh, thank you so much, Ms. President. I just had a very big question with regard to the center's capacity at this time. Do you foresee, um, that there might be greater mental, mental health experts, staff on the, of the center to be able to deploy some of the work that you see, uh, coming down the floor? Um, is staffing, uh, a need to be able to reach capacity?
Uh, yes, sir. One of the, uh, your timing is, is very appropriate. Uh, we did have a, um, a, a position to be filled. Uh, we, uh, posted it, it, and the position is a school safety mental health coordinator, uh, because we wanted a position to, uh, give the visual of what we were hoping that the school districts would have on staff in a multi-disciplinary team. Uh, so as a matter of fact, we were able to do some interviews, uh, and made a selection for a, a practitioner, uh, uh, social, uh, specialized instruction support. Uh, this one happens to be a, um, school social worker with, with some counseling. Um, so we're excited to have that framework onboard. Um, there, there's, uh, movements that we're trying to add to the staff, uh, within, uh, the center to have, uh, regional coordinators that would have that ability to work out of the center, but, uh, be located within the, um, uh, our goal would be to have eight regional representatives. Um, now, I don't want my eyes to get bigger in the stomach, so we, we're going to crawl, walk and run, so we have the ability to apply for federal grants. So at this time, we have two positions that we've classified as an east and a west coordinator that would do the outreach to the district safety directors, as well as conjoin with the, the S B I and glomming onto the behavioral threat assessment, uh, uh, group that they have within the Fusion Center, is trying to, to, to connect the different tapes, the strands of, of a security tapestry together, so that it has, um, you know, a, a cross disciplinary a- approach. Um, so, yes, always looking for representation, uh, but I think we have a good, uh, foundation that wasn't there when I got there, that has the opportunity to, uh, have some hands-on approach with, uh, these districts. Uh, we reopen the communications with the district safety directors, uh, and we have constant communication and, and, and getting feedback from them as well, because we're, we're advised, we're not really in oversight and, and we, we, our goal is to be as best advocate for that as possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trumbo.
Any more questions, comments? Like to thank?
Yeah, this is, this is Mark, this is Mark Johnson. I do just want to chime in.
Okay, Mr. Trump, go ahead.
And just, yeah, thank you. Just to share my pride and gratitude, uh, for the team at DPI and, uh, sincere appreciation for the team that we have brought together in so many different aspects. Uh, I think it's hard to even wrap our heads around that just a few months ago, we lived in a pre-COVID nineteen world, and there will be a day again where we're past this crisis, uh, and we're past the COVID nineteen, and we will need to resume these amazing programs. And I'm just so grateful that we're keeping them going, uh, because there will be a day where we are fully back in school facilities. And this is, uh, this one is just a fine example of, uh, thank you for Bo Trumbo for his leadership and really coming in and, and spearheading this and driving it through. Uh, this is just a, a great example of the work going on, uh, adding to work like Innovative Assessment Pilot that was going on, uh, transforming the department, all things that will pick up again one day. It's, it's nice to, uh, it's nice to have a reminder that there's a lot of good work and we've got to get to the COVID nineteen crisis, but this, this good work will be waiting on the other end and still going on through us. So, thank you all.
Appreciate it, Mr. Trump. Again, we'd like to thank Mr. Trumbo and Mr. Anderson for a very representative, uh, presentation here. And, Mr. Chair, with no other questions, uh, that concludes our report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Uh, that concludes today's committee reports. We'll have two more committee reports during tomorrow's board meeting. I will thank all board members, advisors, DPI staff and others who contributed to today's meeting. Before we move into closed session, uh, turn to Dr. Townsend Smith for any instructions that board members need to be mindful of in moving to closed session. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Thank you, sir. Um, good afternoon, board members. As we move into, into closed session, um, and whatever, um, respective break the, the chairman directs us to, those that are not participating in closed, um, will drop off of the line, uh, and then this, the streaming will be stopped. And then, um, as we move into closed, um, you will, uh, if you like, board members, you can, um, leave your, you can then turn on your camera, so we can participate in those type of, um, discussions as we move into closed. Um, and then if we go into a break before closed, I will leave this WebEx up and running. You will just remain muted, um, as we prepare for the break in closed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend Smith. I now ask for a motion to go into closed session and note to the audience and online listeners that following closed session, the May sixth, two thousand twenty meeting will adjourn immediately. Vice Chair Duncan?
Thank you, Chair Davis. I move that the State Board of Education go into closed session, consult with our attorneys to discuss Hope County versus Atlanta and North Carolina State Board of Education, Connecticut Minds Inspire LLC, Nescobana Henderson versus North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Connecticut Minds LLC and Denise Henderson versus North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, personnel matters, other attorney-client privilege matters, and information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to oh nine N C A C oh six B dot oh one oh three confidentiality of solicitation document, and oh nine N C A C oh six B dot oh three oh nine evaluation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. Is there a second?
Second, J B.
Second, Mr. Buckston. Uh, Dr. Townsend Smith, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Mr. Buckston?
Yes.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right, great. Motion carries. Let's take a break until 12:30 and be in closed session at 12:30. Thank you all.